Hello, everyone. If we may, let's bow our heads for a minute of reflection and soul searching. Just bow your head for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We'll officially call this meeting to order, which is our regular monthly meeting, and say welcome to all of you. Those of you that may not be familiar with the way we run our town meetings, to my left, all the way in the rear, on the table is a copy of the agenda and supporting documents for what activities we're going to participate in tonight. If you cannot hear me or anyone speaking, please raise your hand, and we will do what we can to make the voice larger so that you can hear well. So just raise your hand if you cannot hear. At this time, number three on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the flag. To my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda is a consideration of the agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to accept it as presented?
So moved.
Or any of a motion to accept?
Second.
Peter Freer, second in discussion. Hearing now, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. And we are number five, consideration of approving the minutes. I would consider a motion to approve A, B, and C.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one very minor correction. That on page six, the third paragraph, says Commissioner Butler said it is still concerned about the eighty-plus that are part-time residents. I'm pretty sure it was eighty-plus percent.
Right.
Good catch.
Just so.
Anything else? All right, we have modified that one number.
We've approved them as.
As modified?
As modified.
Second.
All righty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk with change. Public comments on the agenda items is number six on the agenda, and we have no speakers that have signed up. So we're now number seven. If we can move this quickly all the way through, we're going to be hung before long.
Wishful thinking.
Mr. Freer.
Yes. This is the receipt of the Inlet and Beach Board Protection, Beach Protection Board report. Like to thank the Beach Board for their hard work. Just wanted to note that a letter was sent to the county expressing our interest in the wider and deeper project. They're also working on a framework for a long-term plan, and thanks for the hard work.
Number eight, Mr. Freer.
Yes, this is the receipt of the water tower memo from Planning and Zoning Board. I'd like to point out that the Planning and Zoning Board, I'm reading from the report, voted to recommend a phased approach to the issue. The first phase would consist of a study to be done by an engineering firm which specializes in water systems and has experience performing water supply studies to determine at what point a second water tower may be needed. They also recommend that if it is determined that a second tower is needed in their future, that the county be contacted about potential cost sharing. So my reaction to that is, I think we should, and I will, put this item on a future agenda to address this recommendation.
I have a, when you do that, is it possible for us to have perhaps a more complete report of the discussions that went on for a couple of months in P and Z of what led to the recommendation? Because it's very helpful, both for the commissioners as well as for the future people who have to deal with it, if we have a couple pages written, what was done, what were the considerations, sort of what was the logic path that led to the recommendation?
Sure, could we, we have a.
Should have the minutes.
Yeah, we have the minutes, but we couldn't get the report based on the minutes.
Well, minutes, minutes would be how, if they'd been here, it would have been, again, it would be clearer how this, why this recommendation is made, and I think we need to have that in some packet.
Yeah, it was actually, you know, the right angle, engineering.
No, no, I know, that was in the packet, but there were discussions that happened, a Q and A and things.
Sure, 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 sure.
So I'm just, I'm not arguing with the recommendation, I'm asking for completeness.
Okay, we will ask that when we put on the agenda.
Thank you.
No problems.
Assistant Town Manager Ferguson, number nine on the agenda. Navigation Projects.
Good evening. I have three updates to talk about tonight. The county did receive a grant. It's been discussed before at the Inlet and Beach Board meetings and for the Board of Commissioners before the letter went back to the county where they asked for our input. We did send a letter on January 4th. January 30th, before the Brunswick Shoreline Meeting, staff was asked to attend a pre-meeting where some of our concerns and comments were addressed with Deputy County Manager Steve Stone and the county's engineer. And some of the highlights from that meeting were as follows in your bullets in your agenda packet. The county doesn't foresee doing modeling at this time. They view this as a pilot project and a test source for data for later, larger-scale projects. This project will require a major modification to our SDI-5 permit. There was a question that we had of whether it would be major or minor. It will be major. The county views this as a one-time test. So in regard to where we had questions about it going back and forth between communities, they want to see if this will be effective in decreasing the number of cycles that dredging has to occur. So they aren't really moving past that at this point and talking about the going back and forth between the communities. While the county wants to implement or achieve a fiscal policy of the seventy-five, twenty-five split, there was mention that they would entertain the Board of Commissioners, sending some sort of request or recommendation for additional funding as not part of the grant, but you request that they fund more of the project in a separate request to them. And the project as proposed in the county's grant application will depend on dredge plan availability. The town did make a request that if the project is voted to move forward, that the county engineer and the towns engineer work together to create a design template that could potentially qualify the town for FEMA funds and engineer beach in that area. Staff is of the opinion, based on an email that came from Oak Island's manager, that they are not interested in this cycle of that project. And then in your memo, the figures are outlined that were in Deputy County Manager Stone's email for this project. In the meantime, we did hear February 6th, we have made several attempts before then to get further information on the piggybacking, possible piggybacking of the AIWW crossing. On February 6th, I had a conversation with Brennan Dooley with the Corps. They don't have the availability headroom financially in their permit authorization to go above the, it would be more than the twenty-five percent. So the town would have to contract independently with Southwind if we wanted to do this, and all of these bullet points below would pretty much have to line up. It would be about two hundred thousand cubic yards, including the north widener. We would have to use our SDI-5 permit, which would pretty much use it up this time, would not be available for deeper wider. The contractor confirmed to our engineer, based on environmental windows, that they would be completing the widener in April or May, which would require a separate mobilization and demobilization cost. Those timeframes would also require us to seek modification because of the environmental windows. I found out in an email today that that would likely, the engineer had provided these cost estimates below, but did not include monitoring for turtles or birds, and that would likely be required because of it falling in May. We would have to have at least a five-week turnaround on a grant, and that would be after its completion. You guys sending in a resolution and it going to the state. The town attorney would need to certify that easements would be in place for us to sign contract documents, and Oak Island is, to our knowledge, interested in this, but that could be a permitting issue. I'm not sure if they have their SDI-5 permit in hand yet. So the total cost for that project is outlined below. As mentioned, timing is an issue with all of those factors coming together. Currently, the merit was performing maintenance and was scheduled to be there until February 25th, but on Sunday evening, the Merton showed up. The Merton has replaced the merit since the time of this memo, and the answer that I get is if conditions remain favorable, we'll be here until February 25th. So unless the staff receives some kind of other guidance from the Board of Commissioners, we are going to pursue working with the county on drafting some sort of interlocal agreement for you guys to look at in March. Their thinking is that they would want this board and their board to agree on it, and they're trying to get this wrapped up in the March timeframe with either an acceptance or turning down the grant with the state.
Any questions?
I have a question. So, so a couple of questions. You say it's a one-time, the SDI-5 permit is a one-time, but we're.
We can request after we use it to do an extension, but it says one-time use.
Right, but I thought we were looking at major modifications of the permit. Is that part of the modification of that permit?
Yes, if we do a modification of the permit and do it for deeper wider, the county is going to request that, are you talking about for deeper wider or for AIWW? For deeper wider, the county is going to make a request that that deeper wider does not count against our permit.
Okay.
But I can't guarantee that.
Okay. And you said separately is the, is the cost sharing, is that within the, within the March timeframe?
I would think so. He looked at me and said, kind of, do you know what the commissioners have in mind? And I said, no, I can't speak for the commissioners.
So the answer is yes, probably.
Yes, probably.
Okay, great, thanks.
Do we, do we have a feel, or do you have a feel, how long does it take to expand that SDI-5 permit to a multiple use? Is that possible?
It says on the permit that you can request additional uses after the first time, but we would need to know that we can, we can do that, and I don't know a timeframe. David, do you know a timeframe?
The way those, that permit is written is, this is my opinion, that it's probably as general as it can be, and then when we go to expand it for, or do a major modification, it'll get, it'll get tighter. Because most of the time when those permits are issued for execution, it's really a specific one-time view is, has been my perspective on it.
Do they have permits that are multiple use?
When you say multiple use, in terms of different times.
This year and next year and the year after, or?
Well, they, they normally are issued for periods of five years. You know, there are, it's not, you know, there is a window because you have to make sure that you, I mean, the dredging industry is one variable, you know, plant availability, availability and the economics of getting an acceptable project in. So they're normally, you know, five years is when they issue them. But to your point of, question about the different types of uses, were you, were you asking about the use of a different type of dredge?
No, no, just, I'm taking the east end, the west end, if it could be drawn together under the permit and used more than one time, I don't know if that's possible.
That, that would require a major permit. That's, and I don't know if it would kick it, be allowed to do a major permit modification, or in fact, it would have to be a wholesale new permit. I mean, if we, if we're going to go down that road, that, that's, that is a multi-year endeavor, and is probably something that would be best considered after including it in our master plan, can update and review those types of discussions. What we're trying to get through here is, what do you guys want us to do here right now? Because we got two projects that are, that are breaking over the bow, and we need to, we need to do something, either to close the door and keep the water out or let the water on in. My opinion is that the inlet crossing project with all the variables involved there, and the, that is not the way that we want to go about doing beach nourishment at Holden Beach. We want to have a more, a more definite and methodical approach to setting up our program, and this is just a little too loosey-goosey for, for my taste in order to make a recommendation to you. I mean, I'll go ahead and go online, it may, it may bite me later on, but I do not recommend going down this path of, it's almost like the Geico commercial guy with a dangling dollar bill over your head and wants you to jump at it. I think we, I think we need to back away from this one and make the decision on the deeper wider project, and let us tee that up for you in a more deliberative way. We have time to do that.
And can we comply with the requirements to be able to do that with this SD, SD-5?
Yes. Of course, it, that permit will have to have a major modification to it, and that is a, that is a process.
Could you just refresh my recollection? How many cubic yards are we talking about with the deeper wider?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred.
As opposed to two hundred, no, that, those are two different.
He asked about the deeper wider. I didn't go back and reference how much was in the original deeper wider.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's a little more in the deeper wider than in the, okay.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Freer, RSM.
Okay. As some of you may be aware, we had a special meeting with the internal control report being delivered to the, and proposals being delivered to the board on January 15th. RSM is, which is the fifth-largest accounting firm in the U.S., presented that report, had, I don't know, it was about an hour, a lot of interaction between the, between the accountant and the, and the board. As a little bit of history, this, this accounting firm was hired as a result of the twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen audit that called out a need for an internal control review. And if you, we included the report again on this, in this agenda package. There was a, an executive summary that talked about the objectives of financial reporting, accounts payable, fixed assets, payroll, accounts receivable. It was the areas of focus, very comprehensive. And then there was a recommendation section that, that I won't bother reading, but around the finance officer, segregation of duties, vendor listing, payroll, and capital assets. And then if you look at the details that we included, that were included, starting on my page 28, there were color-coded risks, current policy, desired control, and design gap, whether it was a design gap or not. And obviously, the green was good, yellow was, you know, we need to look at it, and red was, need to be corrective action taken. And you could also argue yellow was possible corrective action taken as well. So there were a large number, obviously, we got our money's worth of each category. And what, to be honest with you, what I expected was a proposal from this firm to address the things that came out around the organization, the compensation, and the accounts payable. So I would call for a RFP around those areas, and so to go, sort of dive into some recommendations on how to, you know, address those deficiencies that are called out in the report. And, and we could certainly separate those efforts, you know, the three, three efforts, separate those, it doesn't have to be the same firm, it could be different firms that could do that. The other, I'd also call for the finance director to identify an action plan to eliminate the internal control deficiencies, and also work with the, with the audit committee to review those corrective actions that the finance director would, would identify.
I'm going back. It seems to me, what I recall is, as we had the discussion, there seemed to be a disconnect between the town manager having received requests for compensation information, pay raise plans, and some of that. And it was acknowledged that, that there may have been something missed because the information that RSM said they did not receive, the town manager said, but we do have those things, and somehow the request was not received, but the information could be provided, and that area reevaluated to see how it stands. And that was one of the things I was going to recommend that get done, that this get reopened with the information passed to RSM to make correction if necessary, based on what the town manager would provide. So I wasn't clear that anything on compensation, pay raises, anything should be thought about until that aspect of the report was reevaluated and reassessed with the information provided. I mean, that was my memory, is that somehow there was not information passed forward, there was not a request received, and so there were conclusions based on, you don't have certain policies that we indeed do have.
It was, just, correct me if I'm wrong, was it just job descriptions, correct?
Well, there was, there was an entire section that alluded to the manner in which classification plan was administered in addition to pay raises and that kind of thing being handled. And, you know, my question is, is I thought that the report wasn't final, but I mean, there was some indication that there was a desire to have that revisited. That was, that was my impression.
It wasn't just job description, it was also the policy for pay raises, it was the compensation. It was, it was the section that somehow things never got to us, from us, whether it was a function of what happened in the fall, but, but that to me is an outstanding area.
Okay, yep.
That should be.
That is the case, yeah.
I think it should be fixed by opening up the study again with RSM, having the request made for what information, pass it forward, and then have them do the evaluation.
In that area?
In that area, and see whether or not there is or is not a different conclusion. It may cost us a little bit more money to do it, but I, I don't think we should have what I perceive as an inaccurate report. Inaccurate because there was confusion.
There was confusion, right. There was, as you described, they, they made a request, and it got lost in the translation, and we didn't supply them of that information, right?
Well, I'll go ahead and say that I went back and reviewed the working drafts of the paper, and it was not addressed. Whenever the working drafts were reviewed by me, so I don't know where that, that summary or where that, that, that opinion was garnered from. It certainly wasn't in the working drafts that I reviewed. Neither the program managers, as he took down sections, it wasn't in there, and it wasn't in the draft, draft that I reviewed.
Okay, fair enough.
So it wasn't there.
I don't think they'll have any trouble.
It wasn't there, and, you know, it needs to be, it needs to be put in.
I think they will do that, they will take that information.
Yeah, they need to readdress that in the payroll section.
I'm sure they'll do that.
Yep.
David, would you contact them, or should I contact them?
I'd be glad to contact them.
Yeah, I think they will be happy to respond to you.
And so do we agree if it, if reopening it and then having to.
Give some new appraisal.
A new report, if it's a little bit more money, we, we as the board.
Well, I don't think you should pay them any more money.
Well, I don't either, because we did hit.
I don't think you should pay them another dime on it.
I don't think they'll ask for it.
I mean, they missed it.
They missed it, then they can, they can finish it up.
Yeah, let's not offer it for sure.
I don't think they'll hesitate to do it.
I think when they were here on the 15th, I think they agreed to do that.
Yeah.
We were, not, not really clear, but we were at the, we were at the thirty-day window of, you get the report within thirty days, and we were right at it. We did raise it. So I would just say, before we go down a path in that area.
Fine.
They should be able to do it fairly quickly. I would hope that by the March meeting, we would have something.
Yep.
Well, let's not promise something.
No, not promise, I said I hope by.
Promise something to somebody else's because they're going to have to, they're going to have to be contacted and be agreeable to opening that back up, so.
So that's, that is the hole in compensation, so, but there's two other areas that they're making recommendations around, organization and accounts payable, vendor listing.
I think vendor listing is perhaps to me part of the overall, what David should be now putting together to bring and say, here is the improvement plan that I would propose. Vendor listing to me is just another one of the activities that, just like checklists, just like some of the procedures. But I think it's, I think it's, it's an aspect of a plan that David should be, you said David should have a plan. I view vendor listing as simply part of that.
I, I think the League of Municipalities is likely to be able to support David in that and help him out. I've asked them already, which of these could they do at no cost to us, and I haven't got an answer back yet, but David knows already Anne White, and I think she's already prepared to help as much as she can.
Well, even, even beyond, yes, we need to develop an improvement plan that addresses all of the risks, of course, the reds are, you know, obvious, the first takedowns, but the yellows too, and not forget about the greens. And those, those are low risk, but you still have to stay vigilant in, in keeping those types of things, you know, on, on the burner. You know, that study took eight or nine months to develop. We do need to prepare an improvement plan, not only for the hot topic items, and we can do that, we're going to need some time to do it, though. Like I said, it took, it took eight months to develop. We're still wrapping up the 2018 audit, you know, at, at this particular time. I mean, it's not anything that, that we are burdening the system down, but the Hurricanes just have completely upset the apple cart all through North Carolina, and it's not just Holden Beach's audit that's, that's late. So we're, we're still cleaning, cleaning that up. I'd be interested to see what that audit actually shows as, as any correlation to, you know, what the internal control, but still, the internal control audit has identified things that need to be remedied, and yes, the League of Municipalities is the first, first weapon of choice in assisting on some of the specific financial processes and that we can put into place, and is also an excellent source for, which I have some other follow-up material with y'all on, and we'll take it up in a different forum for compensation plan studies. So there, there, we can, we can bring that back around in our budget workshops that are upcoming, and that's a, that's a ask in, in that, in that forum, so. that are upcoming. I know that's an ask in that form. So, yes, we need to get a development, we need to develop an improvement plan, and we'll work on that forthwith. I'm gonna need some time to actually delve into some of the fixes that are going to be required. I see nothing too awfully horrible about putting a plan in place, but, you know, like everything, the hardest part about doing a job is getting started on the work. We'll move forward on that.
Yeah, I'd like to talk, you know, that the vendor listing is, I think, a pretty big exposure, and now it's a public exposure, so I'd like to, you know, make sure that that's...
And that's also very helpful if the commissioners have, you know, there's red items. If you've got some specific bothers within that, that really helps refine it for me when you have, you know, limited arm strength, and you can know what's important you guys, you want me to go to work on, we'll certainly tease that out first.
Yeah, I think that would be a high priority.
Okay.
Okay.
We're done?
Good.
That it?
Yep. Thank you.
Please, Detective Jeremy Dixon.
Out of full house tonight. Good evening. So the police report is average for February. Our numbers are still good. Our officers are focusing mostly on preventative maintenance and patrols. We have taken a few incident reports this month, or in January. There was another construction site that had some tools taken again. We had a couple of mailboxes that were damaged, just little stuff like that so far. We've been very fortunate. The commissioners were fortunate enough to bless us with the money to get AEDs in this budget. We were finally able to get those ordered, and so we do have the AEDs in. We're coordinating with EMS director right now to try to get the officers trained on AEDs. So soon we should have those up and running, and officers will be carrying AEDs.
In each vehicle?
Not each vehicle. We'll be rotating through. So we didn't supply them for everybody. A little costly is, but we will have them where they'll be rotating through.
Good.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? I would be glad to try to answer them. Oh, yes, sir.
I see you got suspicious activity, suspicious vehicles, suspicious people. What's the general nature of...
They're suspicious.
And are they found to be people that are up to no good, or that somebody was concerned enough to...
To be completely honest with you, I don't like the way that's reported on here. And that is something that hopefully we'll be able to change soon in our reporting. There's three categories in our computer system right now for the suspicious activity, which could be a vehicle, it could be a person. Basically, anytime somebody calls 911 and says, there's somebody walking down my street, something just doesn't look right. We encourage, we wanna know about it because we wanna go check it out. And one officer may go in there and pull it up as suspicious activity, and another one may do it as suspicious person. It's the exact same call, it's just which officer went there. Was it Officer A or Officer B? So hopefully we can narrow that down a little bit where the officers have a little less choice in that, so it's more standardized. Specifically, I couldn't tell you what each one of those, you know, without wanting to pull their reports, but most likely it was something where somebody saw a vehicle that was riding down the street slow. We get a lot of calls on that. If somebody's just riding, you know, real slow down the street, a lot of times they're just looking for a house, looking for property, you know, checking out rentals for the season. That's fine, but call us about it because sometimes they might be riding to see what's in your backyard, see what's going on.
Following the Ford Deer that I followed from a block from my house before I turned up the wrong way so I wouldn't have to follow them anymore.
That's exactly right.
Were they suspicious?
That is what that category is, and that's what that is.
Well, to be fair, this is an inherited report.
It is an inherited report.
We spoke, so I know Detective Dixon is trying to get his arms around his new job.
Yes, hopefully there will be some changes and a little different organization in that as time progresses.
Any more questions?
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for all the good work that your staff does.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clemmons, love it works.
Vacuum sewer pump station number four upgraded since our last meeting. Since our last meeting, our system is a hundred percent switched over, and we're a hundred percent running on all the new components of it. No major issues. Skater is up and running, and I will have to say that is a wonderful thing. It's amazing what technology will do. It seems nice to be able to sit in the office and look at the pump station, know we're pumped on and off. We didn't have that feature before, and I live it. Building has first coat of paint finally. Coming around, it looks good. It pretty much resembles what you see here at the town hall. I'm hoping maybe next month, I know I kept promising y'all pictures, but being about here at the end of the project, maybe I'll get you some pictures that you can look at once for all. Big hatch opening for the tank removal, that was actually solved and cut, and the covers are installed on that. I know that sounds like a pretty minor thing to say, a hatch has been cut, but cut through twenty-four inches of concrete, and a cut that large is pretty amazing to see how they do that. I was really impressed. It's also amazing to walk up to it and take one hand and flip the hatch and look and see that you can pull that collection tank down if you needed to, which somebody will need to one day, and it won't be me, but it will be easier for them to do that. Rest of the time, they've been demoing old equipment, all the old equipment's demoed, all the latte rolls demoed, some concrete that was demoed, removed. We have special order products, a few things that's kinda caused us some snag ups. One of them being the stairs, we showed up today on site, that's a good thing, and that'll be going in this week, so that's one more thing to check off, it's not gonna hook us up any longer. The other thing is loopers, which are scheduled for delivery March the eighth. I don't like that date because I was hoping we'd have the floors wet, but be out by the first of March. Hurricane shutters, they're scheduled for the tenth of March. Got a generator plug that's been on order for about a month, and it's supposed to be in this week. That's just a few of the things that's kinda caused snag ups, and we've had to work around to get to where we are now. But with that being said, providing we don't have any issues when we do a final inspection, because they're not called for final inspection yet, you know, I don't see any snag ups, but you never know what might pop out of the woodworks. If nothing, don't have a major debt, I'm hoping maybe with the next board meet, maybe we'll be pretty close to sending them packing and sending them out of town. As far as the financial report, I think we're gonna come in about where we budgeted, hadn't many add-ons or anything to date so far. If you've got any questions you need to know or anything I might can answer, I'll gladly do it.
Chris, now that you've done four, you have a feel for how much you're gonna have to change? Were there a lot of lessons learned about how you could do it better for the next one, or are you pretty much okay with the process you went through?
Well, I had a few heart attacks this time, and I might not have the next time. I'll just say that, but there was a few scary moments. I feel a whole lot safer now, knowing what I know now, that it can be done. I mean, we did have some major, not some minor snag ups and everything, but it didn't cause any outages or any backups or have any major sewer spills, and it went well considering. But, you know, there was a few scary moments, but it wouldn't be a scary thing.
You feel good going into...
I feel a whole lot better.
You feel good going to number three then?
Now, number three, we won't have that wet well to contend with, that we had to contend with there, so that's one more piece of the puzzle. That was about a three, we hang up just getting some lager bonus and stuff for those fly pumps that are there. They're made in Sweden, and you just don't run up to Harkness store and grab the pieces.
One of the specific lessons that we learned from this is the rent or buy decision that we've been faced with on the vacuum skid, the temporary service skid. We're paying, rent on a skid was about thirteen thousand dollars, and it appears that we've got an opportunity to go ahead and make the purchase for that piece of equipment, which we would have had to gotten it, we've had to rented it three times, you know, over the course of our complete program upgrade. And I believe that where we're gonna end up is actually purchasing the skid because it gives us redundant contingency capability in addition to being a more economical solution during the construction of the total program. We're scrubbing not only the budget, but the existing annual budget to see if it can be accommodated within existing resources, and if it can't, we may come back to you in March for an additional appropriation. But our initial review, we think we can accommodate it within the annual budget as far as operational equipment that we need to get. So that's one, yeah, current budget. Yeah, that's one, you know, example of one specific aha that we weren't anticipating.
Yeah, before it's over with, you'd be saving probably forty-five to fifty thousand dollars in plus you done that piece of equipment when it's said and done, and it may be a time when you need something like that on an emergency situation, and it would help out. It'd be a wonderful thing to have.
Your question at the last board meeting, Mr. Freer regarding, well, what's your plan B? And we were kinda, yeah, well, that'll help with our plan B.
So now, so now we're closing out next, you know, in March, closing this pump four.
I'll talk to that in the manager's report.
Okay, perfect.
Chris, I just wanted to say, you know, we've all been kind of on the edge of our seat. I know you've been on the edge of your seat too, a couple of times through this project, and I can rattle off a few of them, but steel seemed to be your worst one back then, but you handled it extremely well. Your communication to us was excellent. You kept us in the loop, and compliments for that.
Ma'am, I'm glad to hear that. Sometimes I didn't feel that way, but I did not.
I think we can go a step further. Those of us that have worked big projects, to come in on budget, may be illegal. Every, when I do an IT project, it's double or three times. People miss it by so much. You've done a great job of keeping this thing within budget, and I think that helps us a lot. We can do a lot more with that money.
One of my most aggravating things, you know, it's a small apartment. I come in in the morning, and I say, we're gonna do this, this, and this. Well, I get down there and about forty-five minutes into what we're doing, and then you get a call from pump station four that the contractor's got all these issues, and you end up chasing your tail all day long, and it just, but we've made it through.
Yeah.
Well done.
And we know you're shorthanded too, Chris, so, yeah, good job.
And for all of you who have an entry card to get into West End, next time there's a nice blue, blue sky day, go down there. It's gonna do a lot once all these pump stations in to improve the skyline. These little things, they look good. With the first coat of paint on it, I walked by and Chris and I had a conversation about, against a blue sky, it just blends in, it looks really nice. So in addition to being well engineered, taking care of a big problem, the aesthetics are really nice, which is exactly what we want when we have two and three out there on Ocean Boulevard West in full view of everybody.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Ms. Fennel?
Uh, yes.
Are you going to talk with us about our election, or whatever? Before you do that, I would like to say that the two candidates that you're about to consider, again, I'm extremely impressed. I don't know if any stronger candidates you could hope for to consider. And I'd like to ask Christie if what I'm about to say makes any sense or not, but I would hate to see you lose either one of these candidates, and I don't know if there's any way you would consider possibly just putting both of these people on the committee, that I don't know what, Ms...
That's a working board, and the more people we have that can work, the better. That that board works actively behind the scenes, things like this past weekend's events. So I would say the more people we have, the better we are.
So we're not limited to a certain number?
Yes, you're limited.
More than one, but...
Yeah.
It's a maximum of seven.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, it's a tough decision. They're both highly qualified, obviously, so. But I would also, like you said, the one that's not selected, I'd hope that they would keep on, just keep interested and keep on coming back, hopefully.
All right, Ms. Fennel.
The board can vote by ballot. I have them at your places, or you could do it out loud, whichever you prefer.
John, I didn't take your board. I had one, and I lost it. I signed it. Had it folded in half?
I got one here, since I don't get...
I didn't.
Thank you.
Well, that was quick. What kind of computer he is.
I'm practicing my counting.
All right, Mrs. Vick will be the person filling that chair. Anybody wants to count? There they are.
I didn't hear that, Alan.
Mrs. Vick, the lady. All right, I guess we're at number fourteen. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody, I hope, has a copy of the documents, and I just wanna say first that rather than go through the entire document, there are a few new faces here tonight, and what I'd like to do is go over a couple of the highlights before I get into the summary section of this. And so, excuse my voice, I'm just fighting with this cold. It's getting the best of me, I think. And I continue to be concerned about the eighty-plus percent of homeowners that are part-time residents not being able to comply with the revised trash ordinance, and as a result of not being able to comply, potentially receiving a civil fine. Trash containers being left at the street side after trash collection days is not a new concern for homeowners on Holden Beach. A number of years ago, this was apparently identified as a concern and was recognized as an issue on Ocean Boulevard, and the solution to resolve the visibility of containers from being left out for weeks at a time, along with other concerns, to include safety and environmental, were addressed. The town resolved this issue by organizing a container rollback service to homeowners on Ocean Boulevard only, with the expense for this service provided through the occupancy tax. I got that right this time?
Yes, sir.
Over the years, there have been many new homes built on the island, as you know, with new construction throughout the island. Just yesterday, I rode down the Boulevard, and as I was going, oh, a new house, oh, a new house, oh, a new house. They're all over the place, and that, which is good, and that. So if we were concerned a number of years ago regarding the negative appearance and potential safety concerns pertaining to trash cans being left out at street side after trash collection day, I recommend that we focus on implementing the same rollback process rationale that was implemented for homeowners on Ocean Boulevard throughout the island. This will help to address the eighty-plus percent of homeowners that currently have a problem in complying, trying to comply with the trash, revised trash ordinance. Rollback of trash and recycling containers, empty containers will be rolled back to the street side of the home, under the home, or to a corral if available. And then I mentioned in here that I also completely understand that this suggestion will not totally resolve all of the issues. There will still be times when an individual home does not roll back their container to street side in time for trash collection. In that particular case, I recommend the container remain at street side. Do not, I'm recommending not to roll back full containers to the home. There will also be times that a part-time homeowner frequents their homes, which apparently, in line with the various emails that I've received, they need to roll out the trash container to the street, but they are very concerned about the fact... But they are very concerned about the fact that they, they will be in violation of the ordinance. So I'm also saying to eliminate the forty-eight hours street side requirement before the designated collection day. Because if the can is out there, it will be, it will be emptied and it will be rolled With the implementation of island-wide rollback containers after the collection day, the majority of the containers will be removed from street side and help to resolve the visibility, environmental, and safety concerns. So what I've done is, based on that, I put together a summary regarding the highlights of the recommended changes outlined in the statement letter that I just read during the, here and also during the February fifth special meeting. Number one, island-wide rollback, empty trash and recycling containers will be rolled back to street side of home, under the home, or to a corral if available. Two, trash corrals are allowed. Three, full containers will stay at curb until emptied. Containers can be rolled to the curb early, eliminate the forty-eight hour street side requirement before the designated collection day. Enforcement fines would still apply to those not following yard waste requirements and those placing trash on the ground or on top of trash containers. In addition to the summary of the changes outlined in the February fifth statement letter, which I just reviewed, there were two other items that were discussed. Number one, examine the possibility of providing a rollout program in addition to rollback. Two, enforcement and communication. I suggest that the means of enforcement and communication reside with the town staff to determine as it is their responsibility to do this. The initial goal was to provide a rollback program island-wide and the scope of work included in the current bid package does not include rollout. However, it does include rolling back empty and full containers to a location under or beside a building residence. At this time, I recommend proceeding with providing rollback service only and the statement work contained in the agenda item number sixteen be revised to eliminate the rollback of full containers. In order to provide sufficient time to investigate all of the ideas regarding the possibility of offering a rollout program to those property owners that need it, I am suggesting that it be handled as a phase-two separate item and if determined to be feasible, it can be implemented at a future date. And I've discussed a number of these things for the last couple of months. So, all said and done, I'd like to make a motion to direct the town staff to incorporate the changes outlined in the summary section of the statement letter that includes enforcement and is also in today's meeting package, to update ordinance eighteen dash sixteen, chapter fifty, solid waste accordingly, and to make available at the next scheduled VOC meeting the ordinance. I made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I, just for clarification, the only, the only change we're going to make in the ordinance as written is the enforcement date. You're not asking us to adopt any of the changes that you recommend in the letter that you just read?
Yes, I am. I said I made a motion to direct the staff to incorporate the changes outlined in the summary section of the statement letter that includes enforcement.
I wasn't going to say anything because I really feel I have said everything multiple times and I couldn't be clearer.
You can't hear?
I wasn't going to say anything because I felt I had said everything that needed to be said multiple times. But going back to last October at the meeting that we held where we outlined in detail what our objectives were and some of the more important ones had to do with cans being secured up under or around houses, not in corrals. And another one was not to leave full cans sitting at the roadside for days on end, heating up and cooking. So rolling back full containers was going to be a means of getting them away from the road. It was felt that the majority of those full cans were rental properties, that they missed the pickup on Saturday. And if they're up by the house, it's likely that the new renter would call the rental management company and say, something's got to be done here. If you leave them down by the road, what starts to happen is the bags start to accumulate. People look and say, there's no room down here and that's where they start piling the bags alongside the full bins. So I am particularly unhappy about leaving full cans after pickup at the road until the next pickup. We're gonna have a lot more bins this year because we had the audit done where they're gonna be the additional bins for the rental properties. And so we, again, if people just don't get it out there Saturday morning, you're gonna have more bins sitting by the street. I really don't understand the logic of leaving the full bins down there after rollout, when you have the rollback. Roll it back to the house, have the rental property managers get the phone call to come and take care of this instead of leaving them at the road for another couple days.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I guess I, I'd like to make a comment. We had a special meeting where we discussed this for about an hour and a half or two hours. And it was my understanding at the end of that meeting that we had determined that we weren't going to make piecemeal changes, that if we would just stop the enforcement portion of it, we would have time to amend the ordinance as it is now once. And by amending it that one time, we would come up with all of the, we would take all the input and we would decide what we would do when it comes to the rollout. Because we're taking care of the rollback. A lot of the concern we had here was that somebody was going to leave on a certain day, they were gonna put their can out and a can could be out there for a week or three weeks without, and they would be susceptible to a fine every day. Well, we've taken care of that. And so everybody's can is gonna be rolled back, there's gonna be no fines for cans left at the curb. So the one item that we have to work on is the rollout. And I know that you're concerned about eighty percent of the people, but eighty percent of the people don't have a problem with the rollout. And if we just leave this, as I thought we did, where the only change we were gonna have was to the enforcement, we can have time to come up with something that works for the most people, which is what I believe all of us want and everybody sitting out there, the most good for the most people. It just, I listened to, to the recommendation and the reason that we as a board have decided before you issued, before you read that, that we were going to assume the extra cost of rolling back was for safety reasons. So how always, it doesn't seem logical to me that we're willing to let somebody leave their can at the curb for three or four or five days. I don't see the difference in that, leaving it out there to be picked up for three or four days or leaving it out there after the pickup for three or four days. The idea is to remove the can, put it back for safety, aesthetics. The safety and aesthetics inure to everybody's benefit. It makes the town more beautiful and more pleasing for people. The people who rent don't want to drive, drive past a line of trash cans, they don't want to wind up here with a full trash can. I mean, I, I will say, we made a mistake by passing this without having the rollout portion settled. We should not make a mistake by changing it now when we're going to have at least six, eight months to work out that one component. Think about it, the one component, the rollout portion. And as I said, we sat here and we discussed all of these issues only a few days ago. And when I left here, I was, I was sure that what we decided to do was to change the enforcement date and then work on the issues that were, that needed to be addressed. And I don't think what, what, what has been proposed tonight is what we either agreed to or what should be done.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, let me, let me talk about the rollout and a few, answer a couple other questions. Yeah, the, I think Joe expressed the, the issue is we've got a decision to make on a contract to just do the rollback in, you know, a couple minutes. So I talked to the attorney and, you know, how do we, how do we, then, we know we've got a rollout issue as well, but that would, if we, if we modify or, you know, we, we kind of lost that, that opportunity a couple of months ago when we should have included everything, right? So that's, that's, you know, water under the bridge. So we've got a, we've got a, a solution to the rollback right away. We can, we can pass that. We've got people that are interested in doing that. And I, I agree that this trash is not a, this is not a, it's tough to make a, it's not a perfect decision we can make, this trash. The other part, so, and then, and then, so it gives us an opportunity to, to develop, you know, the, an idea's about to roll out and there's, I think a rollout is much more complex than a rollback. You know, how do you identify whether the trash can needs to be rolled out? Do you charge everybody just like rollback or do you make it optional? People aren't here all the time. Is the trash can full or not? Do we charge them for it? It's, it's, the more you think about it, the more complex it, it becomes in my mind. So, so, so I think it, not a perfect world, but it makes sense that, you know, we've got a proposal in front of us for people wanting to do the rollback. We can get that experience under our belt and we can work on understanding the complexity of a roll forward. The other thing is, what I was, what I was doing a timeout for in our last meeting was we didn't know whether Waste Industries was going to change our pickup dates for Tuesdays or Thursdays. And to me, that was a total unknown that could have changed everything. So, so I think that's what I was reacting to as far as, you know, let's do a timeout and get that under our belt, understand that and, and it has been decided that they're not gonna make that change. We're gonna continue to stay on Tuesdays. So, so that's, that's a very large unknown that's, that's not, not, you know, not there anymore. So that's why I, it's not, not perfect, it's not everything, but I think it's a, it's a big step forward to doing what Joe's proposing.
I will, I will, I will firmly disagree with that. It's not a step forward. What, what we're, we're going to vote on, I'm sorry, you want...
Well, hopefully everybody gets a chance to talk. I know I'm the short guy on the stick, but...
But usually we go between a proponent and opposite and unless you're gonna be an opposite of what Peter said...
I'd rather we not do that, no. I'd just like to make my position.
Go ahead.
I listened to the mayor last, last meeting and it was very meaningful to me. He's got a lot of history here, I don't have, I've only got ten years' history. I have rented a house, lived at five fifteen O B W, about six years, rented it, went through all the issues with it, came back, lived there, went through the problem of trash cans stinking and that sort of stuff. Also heard from an awful lot of people, and I've got to say this with a positive note. I got negatives and I got some positives, but a lot of negatives and that's good. That's what we need as a board member, to hear what these people think. When I finished studying it, I realized that about ninety percent of the people either don't rent and just come here on vacation once in a while, or they come periodically but they also rent their houses. Only about ten percent are living, we are, we're here. So the biggest problem is half of those, I think is the major problem. And of that half, I think the issue is only gonna happen on a Saturday. If the people leaving on Saturday don't get their trash cans out on time, they're gonna be out Tuesday, they'll be gone on Tuesday because we got a Tuesday pickup. I think if the town, and I think I'm confident the town has a lot of skill and, and working with, maybe with the rental units to get some sort of a scheme to the, to the rental units to get the message there on Friday night, get them out tonight, right now, I think it will take a major issue off. I think, given the feedback that I got from all of these ninety percent of our population who pay, by the way, about ninety to ninety-five percent of our income on the island. So if ninety percent, they pay ninety percent of the property taxes, they pay all of the one point nine million or whatever we're getting this year on rental income. They deserve to be listened to. As the mayor explained, it's an impossible situation. We cannot make it right for everybody, but we can make it very difficult for two thousand homeowners. I don't see myself doing that. And what we've seen here with Mr. Butler has put together, it may not be perfect, but I absolutely agree, right now it's the way to go. That's my position.
Okay. Can I, can I respond?
Yes, sir. You may, sir.
I agree with what most of what you said, except for the last two sentences. I think that what's being proposed here is less favorable than what we had before, which was an ordinance which wasn't enforced. And again, just, just to go back to it, you can put your can out any old time you want and it'll stay on, on the road as long as it's necessary to be picked up. So to take some of the people who called us, I only come here once in a while, I, I may come and then when I leave, I don't come back for a month, we're gonna have that trash can there for a month, full of trash, or at least a week until somebody comes and picks it up.
Now, if you got two pickups a week, the most is four days.
What, what happens when it's not during the sea...
The most is four days.
What happens when it's not during the season? We're only having one pickup during the season, right? I, I am going to do here what we have, what we have gotten...
But those rentals, those rentals are here during the off-season.
Excuse me, let me, let me just, what, what we have gotten is everybody portrays their very worst scenario, that they come and they leave and they only come a few times. What we're gonna do here is we're gonna have no rule, but we are gonna take on the cost of putting the cans back. I have to be honest, if we're not going to enforce any rules, if you can put your cans out any old time you want, I don't see why we're gonna start paying to put them back. If you want to roll all of these things back, we should forget all the time and effort that we put into this and go back to where we were and not enforce the ordinance, because that's what this is. This is an unenforceable ordinance. You can put in there whatever you want, but we're, we're gonna allow people to roll it out any old time they want so they don't have to do a darn thing to adhere to the ordinance. And then we're gonna pay, we, the community, are gonna assume the cost of rolling back the cans. I don't get it. I don't get it. I don't see where the difference is, why it's any more acceptable to allow a can to be at the, at the street for three or four days or a week in the off-season than it is to have it rolled back after it's empty. I just don't see it.
Everybody is going to react to, I have to do something, it's a change. And people, none of us really like to have change, but what was put together, believe it or not, it was thought through carefully for all types of owners. I said before, I was a second homeowner who didn't rent, so I know what it means that, you know, you can't put a can out because it's not gonna be picked up until Tuesday and it's during season. And you start to plan for getting here Friday, getting the can out Saturday, leaving a bit of trash until the next time, securing the can under your house. If the cans are in good order, I never had an animal break into a can. And I kept cans in Raleigh in my woods for twenty-five years and I never had an animal break into my can. My can was made... My can was maintained, it never was filled to overflowing, and I had a lot of critters in Raleigh. So, it can happen, I'm not saying it can't, but I don't think when the bins are stored properly and they're not overflowing, that we're going to have a preponder, under or near the house, you're going to have a preponderance of animals breaking in. This was meant to try to solve, I agree, solve every problem at once. It's ambitious to do that. Did we overreach trying to do everything at once? Perhaps. But I have felt, particularly given that we're willing to delay the enforcement, to allow people to get used to things, that if we gave it a chance, we might see with effort and education that the situation improves, that things get worked out, and that slowly, it's like a sort of a mental training and just the practice becomes, yeah, that's right, we got to do it today. Oh, yeah, these didn't get taken back in time, they're up by the house, rental management company comes and gets it. Second homeowners who never rent, huh, if it doesn't make it Saturday, if it doesn't, doesn't, if you don't get there in time for Saturday during season and you're not going to be there till Tuesday, can you get somebody to help you out? Do you occasionally take a ba- a bag of trash home with you, which I occasionally drove back to Raleigh with trash in my car for that reason? But if we don't try, if we don't give it a chance, we're never going to see how much of this we can actually make work and improve. And I am firmly for pushing full cans back. Letting the cans sit there doesn't improve the situation. We bid full empty cans back to the house, back to under the house or alongside the house, and I really do think that that's important, to give it a shot this year.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
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 Madam Clerk, it's three to two in favor. And let's see, I believe, uh, number 15. Is that where we are? Next panel?
Um, excuse me. My ordinance was just the, in response to the last meeting, so I would recommend ignoring my ordinance since we're going to prepare another one for the next meeting anyway, so I would just skip mine if the board's okay with that.
So you want us to go to number 16?
Yes, sir.
And, and with that, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd ask the board's indulgent, I need to sidebar with the town attorney for about two minutes regarding item 16 before you take it under consideration.
Restroom. Uh, my recommendation is to strike number 16 from the agenda packet tonight. There's the scope of work that was submitted for proposal included rollback, and, um, it was...
Rollback.
The bids were based on, um, proposed number of rollbacks and, uh, ordinance provisions that were just voted on the board included corrals being allowed, so, um, we're going to need to re-bid it.
Mr. Fullwood, do you understand what the attorney just said?
Little bit.
Um, would you restate that?
Yeah, the scope, Mr. Fullwood, uh, individual that was a load of concern there, uh, good evening, thank you for being here. Um, the proposal that you submitted was based on some parameters that have now changed based on the board's last action, and so the town is going to re-advertise, uh, and ask for bids to make certain that you know what you are bidding on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but he didn't hear the part about the corral and...
The commissioners just took some action that would allow for, for individuals to leave their cans in corrals by the right-of-way, and so that would eliminate some of the cans that you would have expected to roll back underneath the house. And so because of that, we're going to advertise for proposals, um, and solicit bids for, um, a more, um, accurate number of cans that may need to be rolled back.
Okay.
Make sure that you know what you are going to be towards reviewing.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. All right. So, is, are the commissioners in agreement with the recommendation of the attorney to strike number 16 on the agenda?
So you're, you're pointing out two inconsistencies in the, um, statement of work?
Well, the request for the proposal, yes. Uh, it's, it's going to slow it back. Um, look, so it was the responsibility of the rollback contractor to move all containers empty or full to a location under or beside a building or residence. Well, um, the proposed changes that the board just directed staff to bring back, um, includes that corrals are allowed, so those, some cans may not be rolled back underneath somebody's house. Um, that's right. That's right. Roll back to the corral.
Yeah, so we need to roll back to a corral, which we, where, where's, you know, where's the corral? So...
The corrals are typically, from my limited experience, but are located adjacent to the right-of-way.
How to the right-of-way?
Yeah. Or sometimes probably in the right-of-way, but, so, I think the town manager and I are in agreement that you need to re-advertise for the process.
Well, how, how are the bidders going to know how many cans that they're bidding to roll back?
That is not a question that I can answer for you here tonight. I think that's, uh, Mr. Hewitt and Mr. Clemmons are going to have to figure out how to accurately describe the work they're soliciting proposals for.
So, so the implication will be fewer cans rolled back under the house or beside the building because they're being rolled back? They're, they're, they're not, they're in the corral? Or they're, or they're not going to roll back full, so that's the implication as well. So there's, both, both are, are fewer cans being rolled back.
Potentially. Potentially, which might change whether or not one of these individuals that bids would bid based on knowing that.
That's a real crap shoot because there's nothing to prevent owners from adding corral. Like if the bidder's right down the, the Boulevard County today, there might be a dozen more tomorrow or a dozen less tomorrow. I don't know, but I'm not, I'm not a bidder, so I mean, I don't...
If we voted on this and the winning bidder was here and accepted those changes, would it veil out or not?
No.
Because it might change the other bidder's bids, but...
Okay, as your chair here, I'm going to move to number 17. That's, you tell me not to. All right, page two, as Paul Harvey says, number 17, report on golf carts, specific parking. Mr. Evans.
I'm calling him a little puppy here while I go. Me and him is aging at about the same rate. Um, I was going to make a rollback, roll up joke, but I decided...
Please, John.
Some of this stuff reminds me of, um, of that joke, you ever heard the sandwich joke about the three guys on the roof? They open up the lunchbox, and the first guy says, "Man, if I get another bologna cheese sandwich, I have to eat another one, I'm going to jump off this building." The second guy opens up his lunchbox, and he says, "Man, if I get another peanut butter jelly sandwich, I'm going to jump off this building." The third guy opens up his box, he says, "If I get another plain cheese box, cheese, cheese sandwich, I'm just going to jump off this building." And the next day, when the first guy opens up his lunchbox, he got the same sandwich, he jumps off the building. The second guy opens up his lunchbox, he's got the same sandwich, so he jumps off the building. Third guy opens up his lunchbox, and sure enough, he's got the same sandwich, he jumps off the building. At the funeral, the wives are talking. The first one looks at the second one and says, "You know, if I knew he ate, ate that sandwich that bad, I would have never made it for him." And the second one said, "Yes, I, I feel the same way, I would never do it if I'd have known it would have made him jump off the building." And the third one said, "I don't get it, he made his own sandwich." Anyway. All right. That's complex. Golf carts, I think, I think, um, I think at, at some point in time in the meeting, there was a discussion made and someone asked the question about, uh, you know, staff looking into the possibility of turning some of our marsh streets, uh, into places where golf carts can, can park. And of course, I wrote this memo to David, um, after me and Rhonda sat down and looked at those things. And the memo itself, pretty much self, it, it describes it to a T, I think, um, and, and it pretty much outlines what you would have to do. But it, it basically says that low-speed vehicles are legal modes of transportation and already have access to parking anywhere regular cars can park. It says currently, the parking along those marsh streets is allowed for L S Vs that are registered for road use, and those are available parking. It says all parking restrictions, both state and local, would apply, which means that 100 feet in the intersection, they wouldn't be able to park in there. And it would appear that there are three access points near marsh streets, and we were asked to look at those too. The only correction I would make in this document is, is that we measured, we, we swagged those distances from the end of the street, and so they're 100 feet short on every one of them, because you have to go the other 100 feet. But, but basically, swordfish would be 450 feet from the, from its access, um, at 9:15. Sailfish would be basically 1,000 feet to the access at 9:15, and Scotch bonnet would have a travel distance of 900 to the access in 5:67. Uh, there would need to be a text amendment in the current parking ordinance, designating those streets, if that's what you wanted to do, for low-speed vehicles only, golf carts, uh, for those streets. Um, there would also need to be some signage for clarity so people wouldn't try to park in the right-of-way. Um, and this would be available only in the summer months. Uh, after talking to Jeremy, that low-speed vehicles, uh, are not allowed and the speed limit is increased. I, I think that's right.
That's true. Anywhere that's over 35 miles.
So, they, they would only be using those during that time.
What's the...
They're in the, they're in the city.
There's a difference, there's a difference between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart. They look the same, but a low-speed vehicle is defined by statute, so, and it has a few restrictions about the thickness that must have on it, so, that's what you're talking about.
Golf carts are assured and say, why not?
They're, they're, they can be, but they're different, yeah.
Jim, how many spaces, parking spaces are we talking about, we're talking...
I don't know, we have that number. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't grab that number, but we, we have that number, Jim, because we have that parking committee that's, that's been running these numbers for a long time. We do that, but I can't...
I mean, do you believe that there are enough golf carts to take all those spaces?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember. Okay, I, I was the one who made the original request to the board, and it was not using all of the marsh streets. It was trying to use the front part of the marsh streets for appropriate number, whatever that could be, of special golf cart parking, so that, because last summer, we were seeing a lot of golf carts illegally parking next to certain, um, beach accesses. So my question was, was it worthwhile to look into taking some of the marsh streets and sectioning off the first section of it for four, five, whatever, a few golf carts, so that people would still use their golf carts to deliver the kids and mom and the cooler and everything, and then they wouldn't have a long drive to go and park and then walk back. So it wasn't using the whole marsh street, it was using the first however many 100 feet that you would need to get four or five golf cart parking spaces there, so that we didn't have another summer of golf carts parking by the accesses illegally and getting tickets, um, by the way. Golf carts fit there and they don't necessarily, I guess, realize, or, or they don't follow that they're not supposed to park there. So this was just an accommodation to give them incentive to use the golf cart to deliver everything to the walkway, but still be able to park fairly close to the walkway. So, I wasn't thinking the whole marsh street. It's however many people think is appropriate, I never saw more than 15 to 20 golf carts out there parking their accesses west of the pier, which is where I typically would look, which is where they're, most of the sits, where, where they sit. But it was just an idea of sort of getting them legal and still using the cart for what they were using.
But Jim, golf carts can park there now, right?
Yes.
Yes, this car, so we, we would just be saying we're going to give an advantage to golf carts and take away some spots for, for regular cars.
Anywhere there's available parking spaces now, golf carts are allowed here, they're legal.
But you got a license plate on them?
They're legal.
I see a golf cart as a legal vehicle, which we are, right? And everybody has an opportunity to park where they want to park. Legal.
And our, and our current ordinance, golf carts are legal, check all the...
I understand the issue about beach access points and that, because I've seen it many, many times, and, you know, I think about the little ones coming down that walkway and there's a golf cart parked there, and they may not, their visibility is hampered by that golf cart being parked there. That's a homeowner issue, and it should be addressed, due and forth.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing is, is that I wonder how many folks realize that you can park a golf cart, you can park a car. So the issue may not be about a new text, but the issue may be, just like we've always had, have some sort of information out there that says you can put a golf cart here, but you can't put it here. And so we don't end up with golf carts, you know, straggling around the end of the beach access, instead, they park them only where they have to park them.
Yeah, yes.
So I'm not sure if it's just not a dedication, or the way you call it, a dedication, something that you do.
All right, any more discussion on this or action? Hearing none, Mr. Evans, who has got the number 18, commercial setbacks and buffering.
Okay. Hey, I'm sure you got the little, the little thing. Okay. Um, the planning board, uh, well, we, y'all know that we, a lot of people might not know yet, but it's going to be, be out there in the future, but we've been working on the big house issue. It, it's been an issue for a while, we've been working on it. Uh, we started working in the ordinance book, uh, planning, the planning board, uh, there was some rumbling on it, about to see one. Uh, we decided that we might want to take a look at this. We told them that, uh, we felt like there should be some work there if they agreed. We actually pointed this down in that direction. So what we have is, is, uh, this is sort of a planning board instigated and, and, and the staff worked with them. And what we realized was, was that we had some certain cabs in the town where we were really lax in our commercial zoning. Uh, we could end up with a restaurant between two houses and limited to no setback between them, which would be, which would actually be, uh, the opposite of what we, we want. It's the same as having a huge house with a whole bunch of activity in it. The noise ordinance would, would, could be a factor, the whole thing. Uh, there's other problems with it, and that, we'll get into it and I'll talk about it. But the proposals that we are, we are, we are suggesting is, is that for front yard in a commercial application, because we have traffic problems, parking problems, we need to really expand the front yard setbacks so that we can get all that parking in there for commercial. Right now, we have areas in there that, that allow for barring in other areas of parking in certain places, but we really need to be able to accommodate them in a way with the setbacks... setbacks that would help them have that additional parking and also assist the town. So currently, our front yard minimum required setbacks are 25 feet. The county's overlay zone for UDOs are 150. That's why that building that's being built out there on the causeway is so far back. We're recommending that we set ours back 50 feet because of the limited size and depth of our lots. That, like many other things, if it becomes a burden on those lots, they could take it to the Board of Adjustments and get relief if they can prove that it's a hardship. The side yard setbacks, the minimum required was five feet, which means you could, if you're in a, because we allow residential and commercial, you could literally have a commercial structure within five feet of the property line, which would be 10 feet away from you. There'd be plenty of issues with that with the building code already, but it's going to be, it's bad enough that we're mixing the uses in there, but depending on what type that commercial is, that's really too close. So we are recommending, if you look in the red there, we recommend that the side yard minimum required be 20 feet. Open porches, steps or overhangs shall not encranch into the established setbacks. Side yard setback minimums required shall be 10 feet where landscaping buffering meets the requirements under 157.062. And we amended that text there as well. Rear yards, the minimum required is five feet. Now, I want you to understand what that says. It says the minimum required setback is five feet, except that if a commercial use abuts a residential district, there shall be a rear yard of 20 feet. Well, that says if a commercial use, but in the commercial, it says the rear yard minimum is five feet, and we have, we allow residential and commercial. That right there basically says you could have two residential dwellings in a commercial district, five feet from each other in the rear yard setbacks. That's a, that's a big problem. So we're recommending that that be changed, the rear yard be a minimum required of 25 feet, and landscape buffering required. You really need buffering between commercial and residential. There's nowhere, anywhere, you don't have that. If we go through it a little bit more, the lot coverage, it says driveways, parking lots, and parking spaces and parking areas, patios, and other similar areas and surface located outside the building footprint shall be gravel, grass, or of an approved purgative property. Required buffers must have the required approved landscaping. And what that does is, that's ensuring that we don't have 20 feet of gravel or 20 feet of just rock or concrete and that kind of stuff between a commercial use and a residential use, since they're both allowed in the same place. Then we went on to add this text. It says landscaping required. All commercial structures shall have a landscaping installed by the property owner to soften the impact of the bare walls to adjacent properties and to the streets. We already had that. We had that in there, but how are you going to soften it when you're so close to each other? Well, if we adopt these text amendments, we'll spread it out enough. And then we put, in areas required to be landscaped buffered under 157.062 C1 through three, shall be a minimum of six feet high on the sides of the property with spacing no less than three feet, and buffering must be maintained as to be perpetual in its functioning for the life of the use. And what we're hoping for there is that we end up with some type of vegetation or some type of permanent buffering that will help assist to break that up between the commercial and the residential. Once again, if you've got a piece of property and this becomes a problem, you can, and it might be a hardship, you can go to the Board of Adjustments, and whatever portion of it is a hardship, you can ask for relief, just like you can any other portion of the ordinance. We think these are good rules to apply. Staff has looked at it, but we concur. The planning board has gone through it. They've looked at it, and they have actually written a consistency statement saying that they feel the same way. And we believe, both parties, both the planning and staff, believe that for life, safety, health, and welfare, that this is some good changes in the text for commercial. We really feel that way. So what we're asking, what we're recommending is, is that if y'all would like to see these changes, we can actually, we can either carry them back to the planning board if y'all want to look at them further, or that we can, y'all can request that we bring it back. We can do it for a public hearing and go through the process and amend the text. So it's up to y'all. So we can send it back, run it through again. If you've got any changes, look at it. There is one. Is this the one I sent you today?
Yes.
Okay. I took it out. We did take out, on E, it said solid waste disposal containers may be screened, and screen for solid waste disposal dumpsters shall be of comparable material color as the structure they are accessory to. The height of the screen shall be equal to or greater than the height of the container being screened, and the width shall be sufficient to permit two feet clearance between the receptacle and the screen to facilitate cleaning and maintenance. Then the part we took out said, per the North Carolina Health Department. Well, that part was in there, said per a concrete pad which drains the sanitary sewer or dry well is required. We took that North Carolina Department of Health out because that was, actually would be draining into an on-site wastewater. They governed that through Raleigh, and we have a sanitary sewer system. This right here will have to be amended again. I originally marked through it all. I tried to clean it up today while I was in the middle of something, and I messed it up even worse, because it should say a concrete pad with a drain that ducks into a dry well or into a grease interceptor will be required. You cannot, we cannot put an open drain that goes into the sanitary sewer below the flood lane. The problem is, they're going to have to collect it somehow, and then they'll have to have it pumped out or cleaned in some way or fashion, but you can't put that deleterious material into our sewer system, and you certainly can't have a drain below the base flood. So we had, that had to be changed anyway, because that part text is going to be changed anyway. But I will fix that. You know what I mean?
Jim, you said that the planning board approves the amendments. Changes are consistent with the current LUP. So it's also expected to be consistent with the updated plans, while that it's worth putting it through before the LUP is finished?
Well, I mean, that would be something y'all would look at, but I'm assuming that the other LUP is not, if it does anything, it's going to address those deficiencies. I don't think it's going to, you know, be any different. It's going to address that we need to have, you know, we're talking about big house issues and noise and all that stuff. Everything we've done in the past that we're going to be incorporating into that new LUP, these changes we made are, would definitely be consistent, I think, with doing this in the new one. But you can't, you've got to kind of ignore it. It's not been approved. It's not, it's not official yet. We're still have to work under the old one.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. But I believe that it would be consistent with the new one. I believe. Or it worked. Well, like I said, if you would like to review it, you know what I mean, or discuss it, you know what I mean, and decide whether you want to send it down, or run it through the process again, and then bring it back into ordinance form for the public hearing, or, I assume that you can just, you can ask the attorney, but I believe that it could be brought back for a public hearing as a text amendment.
So that it would have to be a public hearing?
Because I guess we got to...
It's required.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it sounds like it was initiated by planning zoning.
It was.
So planning zoning has the ability to make recommendations to the board about changes to the code. The board must adopt after a public hearing that is properly noticed.
Good.
Right. So if you guys want, you could set the public hearing date now, or if you'd prefer, Tim can bring the ordinance back next month, and then you can set it, and then we can do the following month. So it's up to you.
The notice requirements are very specific. It has to be not less than 10, not more than 25 days.
Right.
Something like that.
That's what I guess that's what it is.
Right. So if we want to do it at the next meeting, we would have to set it so I can get to the requirements. But we could also wait till Tim brings it back and then do it the following month.
It's up to the board.
Could you prepare this, and we have the public hearing based on that prepared document?
Right. And you could still make changes. That doesn't make it final. It would be on that document that's prepared.
Before the next meeting in March?
Right. If you guys desire, we could actually do the public hearing at 7:00 PM, like at the opening of the meeting, and then we would have the ordinance that's prepared based off of this.
And we need a motion for that?
Our consensus is just for me to go ahead and advertise for the public hearing and for Tim to prepare the ordinance.
I'd like to say something before the chair entertains. I think it would be very much in order, since we have such few numbers of commercial properties on this island, that the property owners of those commercial properties be made aware of what is being considered, because you're going to have some angry people here because they're going to say they didn't know anything about it. And whether you agree or disagree, the financial aspects of doing business on Holden Beach is driving commercial investments of any kind off the island. If you don't believe it, how many have been built here in the last few years? I mean, how many new commercial buildings we had the last 20 years? I think most of us agree we want a residential family beach, but there are some needs that have to be met. And when you start talking about 50-foot setbacks and stuff like this, and when you've got the lot sizes that we have, what is going to be driving, and I don't want to give this as not a debate or anything, I'm just trying to make one point, that you're going to have to combine multiple lots to be able to meet the parking and setbacks and the buffers and all that. And you're talking about millions of dollars to be invested for a four-month or five-month So I would encourage the consideration of giving a few days to let this be made known to these property owners. And I know you're probably thinking, well, we'll give them notice, there's going to be a public hearing. Well, it might take them two weeks to get the notice out, and then you're going to have a public hearing less than a month. And these owners may live miles away and have to make plans to get here. It's a slippery slope here on. I'll just give you a warning upfront. I'm not in favor or against. I'm just saying, for the sake of publicity of the town, be careful. Moving too fast. And one other legal question for you, Madam Attorney. I was chair of the Board of Adjustment for years, and it was drilled into our head that no waiver of requirements could be allowed if the property could be used in another way, reasonably used in another way. So whatever you're talking about, you could go to the Board of Adjustment if it's a hardship.
You don't have to show anymore that you can't use the property at all.
They've changed that.
There's been some, there has been some modification in 168395 on that one.
Okay. So if you've got friends on the Board of Adjustment or got people that kind of understand your request, you've got a better chance now than you used to have. That's basically what it was now.
If I was the attorney representing the Board of Adjustment, I would say it's a quasi-judicial matter in that there is no friendly exchange. It is based on substantial competent material evidence presented to the board, but I'm sure that that is a Pollyanna vision.
It used to be cut and dry. If you use it any other way, you get what you're asking.
We've been trying to train the Board of Adjustments. We've had, we've had to hear a couple times.
Mr. Evans, is this time sensitive so that the two-month process would be a problem?
Not that I'm aware of.
So if we bring it back, complete it for the next meeting, and then schedule a public hearing before the subsequent meeting?
Adminstratively, I would suggest that that would also allow an extra level of notification for the commercial property owners. We've got, we've got two North Carolina certified property mappers on staff, and certainly we can, we can go through the tax rolls and tease out the commercial zone properties and actually provide them another layer of notice or advice that this is in the offing and just let them know what's going on.
So you're agreeing that what I just suggested is okay?
Yes, sir. I'd suggest that Mr. Evans come back with a final draft at the March meeting, at which time the board would set as a public hearing for April consideration, and in the meantime, we can make special effort to contact the commercial property owners.
Yeah, we may want to notify the adjacent property owners too, because it affects them as well.
What's going?
Madam, of course, you need a...
If that becomes consensus, it's fine.
All right. Okay, number 19. I mispronounced your name again. You get to slap me if you want.
You didn't say my name.
I didn't say my name. Well, I want to say it. Lochner. It's not Lochbeer. You chastised me over and over again. I'm going to get it right tonight. Kurt Lochner. All right.
I didn't prepare any funny jokes, but I do have a contract. Just as exciting. AT&amp;D would like to negotiate terms of their water and lease agreement, which they give every couple of years. They have been too often together for the board to consider. They are listing low for you in the market charts. Right now, we get about $29,000 from them approximately this year, and all the rentals made are about $100 a year. So you guys need to let me know how I need to respond to Ms. Morris.
The last time you sat with me, you did not respond.
That is correct. And that is usually been, from what I understand.
My question, the last nine and a half, I didn't hear from anyone saying, saying that they do like us to reduce the... Here, there's a little bit of a study that they had. I just have a question for counsel. In the document that I have, it says that they have the right of termination of their tenants and women. Could you tell us what that means?
I don't know what it means to them. They're, under no circumstances would I suggest that the board enter into any of the proposed terms that are in the package. They do not make sense under North Carolina law. If the board wants to consider reducing the price, then we should enter into a discussion with them regarding a lease that would be upheld in state North Carolina.
I can't speak for them, but I'm not in favor of it, but I just wanted to know what they're rights for. In other words, if we say, no, we're not going to do it, can they actually terminate their lease agreement, given us 30 days' notice, which usually would have been a draw costly?
Under their current terms, it's like existing contract.
Yes, the existing, the existing.
I don't have the existing contract.
I think that there is, I mean, I'm not, I have to go back and reread it, but I think that is a contract. I don't think they usually do. But I think that...
There is, I don't know how long they've been here, but I know that this has come up recently, in recent months, but, I mean, the town can't engage or enter into leases beyond a 10-year period of time for personal property without treating it like it's a sale of real property. So whatever the term of the lease is, we probably need to be looking at it from that perspective also, whether or not the town, the lease is enforceable as extracted now.
I think that they renew it next year, but we should probably...
And the second thing is, there has been a lot of movement in the past couple of years in legislation that was adopted in 2017. It seems to be, it seems to be a pushback from these types of providers strengthening their rights to put devices on public utility poles and public water towers. So it may be beneficial to look at the lease and see what the terms are, and before new legislation gets pushed where perhaps they don't even have to pay you anymore for putting something on your water tower. I don't know if that's proposed, but the league probably will, David. There is a movement afoot. You know, there is a movement afoot.
Any motion to be made tonight, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Lochner. Number 20, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. I'm requesting that the position classification for water distribution and wastewater collection system techs and equipment operators be added to our existing classification and pay plan. The existing pay plan doesn't include a specific provision for either of the equipment operator or the water distribution wastewater collection system technicians, as those individuals currently perform the duties or classified as general laborers. The nature of our town utilities work, specifically vacuum sewer operations and heavy equipment to include, include, excuse me, the nature of town utilities work, specifically vacuum sewer and heavy equipment operations, to include those requiring commercial driver's licensure in the public works department, has evolved far beyond the skills, knowledge, and abilities of those individuals performing general labor type work. The proposed addition to the pay plan followed the minimum salary range for the water wastewater technician is $31,821, maximum of $44,453. Equipment operator's range is $33,158 with a maximum of $45,790. And these two classes of employees will provide for existing employee growth, recognize actual work being accomplished, and probably just as importantly, can be accomplished from within, within existing manpower budgets. This will result in two general laborers being reclassified as a result of the proposed action, and each will receive a modest market pay increase of about 5%, which is about $1,700 a piece annually. The recommendation is for the commissioners to approve the proposed addition to the existing classification and pay plan, which was handed out to you and left out of the package as we attached it.
David, in effect, is this giving two, two people who have worked good and learned things and advanced themselves, if that gave them a small promotion? At the effect, they're going to the next level because they're better qualified now?
I would, I would actually classify it as not being promoted, but actually recognizing in arrears what they're really doing, so promote them in arrears. It's woefully overdue to recognize those guys accurately.
Does this require a motion?
You guys, yes, the recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed additions to the classification and pay plan.
So move.
Second, motion made, second discussion, hearing now.
I just have one question, one definitely. This classification pay plan, is this what, what were we talking about earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Part of it, or...
That's, that's the actual pay plan. There, there is another piece of it, which includes position descriptions and the overall personnel policy.
Okay.
There we have a motion, second. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no, it's unanimous, Madam Court. Resolution 19, that's Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. This resolution will allow our advertising for different contracting requests to be accomplished by electronic means for formal bids. Makes it a lot easier on us, and it also probably has the net effect of hitting a wider, a wider audience, makes all the requirements of the existing law.
Your motion?
So move.
Just a second.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, question?
I just, I just have a question, too. This, this language is pretty ambiguous to me, and I was wondering if there are some criteria that can be used if you're going to say that electronic means is as effective and more efficient, so that you can't be questioned later on that, you know, the ABC company didn't get a chance to properly bid on the contract. So are there, are there any subjective things that you can look at to determine whether it's as effective or efficient, or is it just all objective based on staff determining that?
I drafted that language. I'll take the sword.
Well, then I guess I'll just ask that question. The question was, is it needed?
It is consistent with resolutions authorizing advertising by electronic means across the state. Parameters that may be set by different policy, but, I mean, the cost of the publication versus, I mean, there are things that you would consider, but that would really be...
Specifically, in cost not being consideration, there have been occasions where we needed to publish a notice of advertisement, and because of the timing issue of when we needed to get an advertisement into the Star News or to the Beacon, we were compromised in our ability to actually bring the project to bear. So that's, that's from our, from the staff's perspective, it really, it is a force multiplier in, in what it brings to our abilities, and we'll, we'll continue to, I mean, if we want to continue to publish in papers, we can, but that has really been the single most important thing to me. When we were doing the, the Century Reach project, and we were needing to get advertisements, and the windows were restricted, this would have been really, really advantageous to us.
That might be the language that's used in the statute, too. I'm trying to check, but I can't get on your internet.
But I totally, I totally see what you're talking about, is that, I would just, we're just posting on the internet, well, everybody may not, I mean, everybody probably does, but everybody may not, you know, be privy to that advertisement. Or we're posting it to our website. I mean, who, who goes to the town of Holden Beach's website to, to, to seek out work? Not Manson Dredging Company, I guarantee you, they don't have a guy that's doing that. So that would be a case where for sure we're going to the paper, but if we get in a jam, we would...
I was just concerned if there were some type of object, subjective, or object, or rather than subjective, criteria that you would be able to say, okay, you know, it's one, two, three, three out of four, we, it's safe for us to use this rather than publication, and then nobody can challenge the contract once it's approved.
I don't think they'll be able to cha-challenge the contract based on the advertisement. If the Board adopts this resolution, it's authorized, the statutes allow the Board to authorize the electronic advertisement. So as long as you're meeting the requirements that are set out in 143-129 through an electronic means, then your, your advertisement meets requirements of public bidding.
So the language that says it's efficient and effective is really, this is just boil up, so it doesn't mean anything?
That's, well, I think it means something, which is why I put it in there, but, and about 50 other attorneys think it means something, too. But you can strike it if you need to.
I'm not looking to strike you, I'm just saying, that when it says it's, it's more effective and efficient, then either it is or it isn't. And if those, if that, if it, if it's not necessary to be more effective or efficient?
I think that the, what I'm trying to say is that David's example is a perfect example. If you're trying to publish a notice to creditors, then publishing deadline is the Thursday before the Monday before it's gonna run. If David gets wind of an opportunity for something, and he wants to push the button on a Thursday to meet the time period so that y'all can award a contract, then it is more efficient, and it is more effective.
Exactly. I, I understand that.
Right. You're trusting your manager or your finance director to know when it is more efficient and effective, I guess is what I would say.
Create a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no, unanimous, Madam Court. Number 22, Person.
FEMA held a public assistance applicant briefing on February 11th, and staff attended, just as we did in Florence. All the municipalities that are involved will have to pass a resolution. The resolution, just my request, that VOC does make Town Manager David Hewitt as the primary contact and Fiscal Operations Clark Lochner as the secondary contact on the FEMA resolution. And the suggested motion, which is close.
Madam Court? Madam Court, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Questions? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others say no, unanimous. Town manager, support Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Thanks for everyone that either attended, participated in, or helped out with both of those 50th anniversary events last week, the social end of gala. I think that they were, they were big hits, or at least that's the feedback that I've been getting. I would like to put a reminder out for everyone that over the course of the next year, we will be collecting memorabilia for the time capsule, and on the town's next birthday, that'll be locked up and secured. So we'll be collecting stuff throughout the year that's appropriate for the time capsule. Governor Cooper announced a couple of weeks back a $16,000 award for Holden Beach to construct a public access grant down at 289 and 1/2. We're currently awaiting for the paperwork, and with the intent that the town's going to build or construct that access this year with current appropriation. The Holden Beach Renewalment Association has got a program funded in place. $40,000 worth of planning and fertilization is going to be, I think it kicked off a couple of weeks ago in the Century Reach area. That effort will be extending out through the late springtime, and it's the ripe time to fertilize. So thank you to the Holden Beach Renewalment Association for augmenting the town's resources and efforts in the beach management area. FEMA and hurricanes, we've still got $335,000 pending for Matthew back to our Century Reach project. We're waiting on it, and I can't help but feel that a lot of the uproar with the national emergency and building the wall and counseling money for wildfires in California may have had something to do with things being in uproar. But anyway, they've still got $335,000 that's supposed to be coming our way for Matthew. Florence, we continue to work providing additional surveys and the engineering requested by the FEMA program manager in order to develop that required project worksheet before we can have our requirements firmed up and moved forward with a project. Currently, the engineered Florence sand loss are estimated at close to a million cubic yards inland, 990,000 cubic yards to be exact. 560,000 cubic yards of those losses are within the town's engineered beach portion of the Century Reach project. President Trump's declaration for Hurricane Michael is going to allow North Carolina and Brunswick County to participate in the same type of FEMA mitigation of storm damages as we have for previous hurricanes. The African Briefing, as Christie wrote, too, was held last week. That is the actual kickoff, and now we'll go to work on developing a project worksheet for the Michael damages, which at this time are estimated at over a half million cubic yards inland inlet, with 300,000 cubic yards of that lying within the Century Reach project. Everybody here can do math, so we've got about 860,000 cubic yards, which is better than half of the volume in our Century Reach project, with a total volume loss from both storms, and that's like 1.4 million cubic yards inland inlet. So we've had, we've taken some hits this year, and collectively, those two hurricane events had the potential to become one major project from a, from a contracting and mobilization standpoint. That just makes logical sense to only have one mobilization for two major digs, but I don't know how FEMA's gonna be able to accommodate that through the federal contracting process. We're just gonna have to belly up, get it real close to us, and make sure that we are, we're on top of it. Anyway, you split it, we're up in the $20 million range for both of those projects, and that's gonna drive the need to alter our approach to the modification of the Century Reach project to permit. In other words, we've gotta find some more sand. There's only a half million cubic yard in the, or we think there's only a half million cubic yards in the existing permitted sand source, so we're gonna have to, to go to work on obtaining some more sand pretty quick. Canal dredging, for those of you that live in the canal subdivisions, Holden Beach Harbor, that, that project's going pretty good so far. We're about 75% complete. Holden Beach Harbor and Heritage Harbor are done. The dredge surveys for Heritage Harbor are, were complete today. The engineer will probably poke them around for a couple more days before the dredger is released to move on over to Harbor Acres. We're anticipating that that will occur later this week, so that gives us about six more weeks on our permit, and we're thinking that that's going to be enough time to get the project wrapped up in this dredging season. The reimbursements to the state grant are, now that we've got the code cracked and the process in place, those reimbursements are coming through like clockwork, and it is working pretty well. Please, the way that, that we're getting turn, the money returned to us. Now, I don't know how long that's gonna hold out, especially when the, when the state stops cutting checks about 60 days before the end of the fiscal year, but we'll, we'll try to make sure that we have all of our responsibilities met in order to bring that, bring that to a close before the end of the fiscal year. Mr. Freer, to your question about where are we at with the lift station four update, we've already got the engineering services requests for qualifications for the lift station three outfit on the street, and the intent is to receive those and have them back for the Board of Commissioners' March meeting. Anticipating that everything will be good with the closeout of the lift station four outfit. Now, that's, this is just for the, the engineering services provision for the design work on it. The actual contracting for the, the outfit will come subsequent to the design being finished by the engineer.
To that point, was there, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, was there any analysis of combining three and two?
Our existing program and our budget didn't provide for that. The method, the method that we've used, or the process that we've used was to take them down one at, one a year. And, and, and based on the, the... And, and based on the realities that we've seen with just doing the one lift station and some of the idiosyncrasies that we're aware of with lift station three, I think that that's probably the best, the best way to proceed, especially with the tight quarters there on that side. That's, I'm done.
All right. Quickly, the trout are biting. They're catching a lot of big shrimp. Six fifty a pound, I understand from what I've told. The shrimp boat under the water out here is still being remembered by the county commissioners, and promises are still being made. Some action is going, that possibility of doing some work in the direction of removing that. But of the last several, several weeks, I'm getting complaints about the dredge boat that's anchored across from Canal Drive. It's been there, I don't know, do you remember how long? Four months?
A couple months.
And unless you guys know something I don't know, and maybe the waste department can find out, but I don't know of any violations that could do it.
Did that law not get passed by the county that you can't abandon a boat more than three days unless it's on your own property?
Well, it's anchored, and it's not in the channel.
It's not within our corporate limits, I.
So it's not?
It's a maritime law deal, but anyway.
You say that, and I, it's south of the middle of the channel.
It's not within the corporate city limits. The city limits only get to the low tide mark, high tide mark.
For the, for the coastal?
For the entire island.
Sales are ahead of last year at this point. Rentals are ahead of last year at this point. And I don't ever remember seeing as much activity in new construction appears or maintenance. That's what is going on in Holden Beach right now. So my prediction is that come summertime, this island's going to look the best maybe it's ever looked. I'm really excited about it. We've got a good number of the homes that we manage that have been promising for years, do work, and six things up, and many of those owners are doing it. I've got one homeowner that I've been managing for over 40 years. He's spending money on his house this year, first time, and it's significant money. But overall, I'm just simply going to say that the island's going to look great. There's something I'm excited about. And I know Mr. Evans is there, I guess.
He actually was in training today. He was headed back to another session during the morning, so.
I know he's bound to be busy. John Bennett.
Just thank everybody, and again, comment on the feedback that we got on solid waste issue. They're great. You can't give too much feedback. If you see something, something legitimate, you know it's an issue, let everybody know what you think. Add it all up, and if you get a good feel, then how does it go? So thank you very much. And the dredge boat has gone quickly. So the second one's out there. At least he's dropped a little water on our beach, right? Or the sand on the beach now?
No, you're talking about the emergency. Near shore.
Near shore.
Mike?
I'd like to echo John, that I appreciate everybody's input on the solid, on any issue that we have. It's always beneficial to hear from the people that are going to be affected. And again, it's better to hear about it before we vote on the issue than after, plus any input is appreciated. And I'd like to thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to thank, town staff, especially Christie, for the 50th anniversary celebration. It was, if anybody went to either of them, had a good time. And I'd also like to thank the members of the park and recreation for all the work that they put into building up to that event. And in case you didn't know, they made majority of the desserts that we all had there. So it was really good. And I'd like to thank the mayor and brother Lynn. They were entertaining and very packed filled presentation on the beach of Holden Beach. So it was really a job they're going to make to the town, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Dan?
I'm not going to repeat everybody's thanks about anniversary celebrations, because they were great. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I would actually like to thank Heather for magically keeping up over the past six months on minutes on a slew of special meetings as well as our normal meetings. And I have to give her credit, because it really makes it easier to go back and track history, having all of the stuff up to date and so thorough. So Heather, keep up the good work, but thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd also like to thank the town staff in particular for the preparation and the planning. And there was a lot of planning that went into that, and certainly proven that from the success of the events that occurred. And Mayor and his brother did an outstanding job providing the history. I mean, if you were there, you learned a little something about Holden Beach. And also, I'd like to thank chapel, because of the use of the chapel. We couldn't have pulled it off without the use of the chapel and our hall here at the same time. So we should let the folks know the chapel, but thank you. A big thank you.
Freer?
And I'll add my thanks. I had the opportunity to go to both events. Both were flawless, and a lot of people, a lot of planning was involved, I'm sure. Again, the mayor and Lynn did a great job. Christie and Heather, and I'm sure there was other staff involved in both events. Parks and Rec Board did a great job, and given the food was great. And the desserts, of course, were very good.
Thanks.
Okay, public comments. Anybody want to say anything about anything that you have on your mind tonight? If you raise your hand, I'll recognize you and come and speak into the microphone over here. If you'll give us your name and say whatever's on your mind. Good or bad or intended?
Yes, sir. I just have two questions. One is, was there anything sent out to the residents about any feedback or for or against the rollback issue?
Anyone want to answer that?
Was there anything sent out, any kind of material sent out to get some kind of feedback from the residents of Holden Beach on this rollback can thing?
David, did you send anything out?
Well, there's nothing found.
It's good public.
Nothing's been finalized. Okay.
So when you say resident, are you talking about a full-time resident here? Are you, are you a person that visits the island?
Homeowners of Holden Beach.
Okay.
Property owners, right.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other question is, can anybody explain a bit on this, these comments about what is negative appearance and potential safety on these, on these cans?
Well, I guess some of the, some of the input that we've received is that there seems to be more garbage cans as the years progress left on the streets than before. And also that these garbage cans, and I know it happened to me when I came back after a storm, that the garbage cans blow over, and you got to, especially if you're coming back at night, you got to dodge the garbage cans in the street, because the empty cans tend to blow over. You get a lot of wind here on the island. Aside from all the deer we have, too, as well.
So you don't have any comment about potential safety? I don't understand that.
Well, I could say, that to me is a safety issue.
Has there been any incidents, any accidents?
To my knowledge, no. To my knowledge.
And how can you justify that?
Justify what? Make a new statement?
That come, that come.
Sometimes in the area, safety, just like I did in my, in the real world, you try to prevent things from happening, the potential things. And I applaud the people that bring things to our attention so that obviously, and with our own experience, too, as well. But when I turn a corner in my car, and I found a trash can in the center of the street, and I got to go around and dodge it, right? Sometimes I don't know whether there's a child there or there's people there or something like that. So it's really prevention, a matter of prevention.
Well, we, I've lived here for 15 years, and I've never, on our street or any of the other streets, had any problem with any kind of can that you're talking about, somebody running into a can or it's been out in the street, you know, anything like that. So I don't, I think this, this thing here is just because maybe some of the commissioners just don't like what it looks like with, you know, with the cans. If you, another thing is that.
That's good.
If you have a corral and it's past the 10-foot right of way, where is the visibility and environmental and the safety issue here? If you have a corral that's, that's off the right of way, and you put your can in that corral?
There probably isn't need for that, but for just one sitting by the street, I live just across here, and a grandchild of one of my neighbors was out on this little big trike. And he rode from behind the car, past the garbage can, and the garbage was right on the street. I barely missed him. I didn't see him at all coming behind the garbage can. Garbage can is more of a blocked golf cart. And golf carts along the roadway are a problem for kids and people coming up between them for cars. So. It is a safety issue for, and when you can't see beyond it, it's a problem.
I mean, you're talking about golf carts. You're not talking about trash cans.
Yeah, but a trash can's even bigger in terms of blockages to the golf cart. If there's kids behind it, you won't see it. It's not a major thing, but it isn't a bad.
Okay. Another one is if you get this, the liability with these workers that are going to roll the cans back underneath your house, okay, would, if something happens to them, they get hurt, who's liable for this?
You going to speak to that?
Not unless the Board of Commissioners directs me to.
Okay, I've got a point of order over here on my side. We're not supposed to do an except list on the public comment. So that's it, Pete.
No comment on?
We're, public commentary is not a rebuttal and a discussion back and forth. It's not a chance for the public to voice their opinions. Point of order has been made, so I have to cut you off.
Okay.
Now.
You don't have to cut him off. We just don't have to respond. Get all the questions you have.
All right, my point of order person. If you want to say something else, they're just not going to discuss it.
No, that's all. That's, that's all. I just want, you know, whoever's liable for this if somebody gets hurt.
I'm sure Mr. Foolwood and the others that are going to be beating have their own insurance. All right, thanks, Pete. Anyone else want to say anything about anything? All right. Did your motion agree with the test? Oh, we did? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry I didn't recognize you.
Since we have been talking trash for more than I'm saying, I just don't understand why the island doesn't have mandatory recycling to leave for the rental properties. Okay? I think that, I think everyone loves the oceans. They come here, it's beautiful, we want to keep it clean. And if we had mandatory recycling, that the homeowners wouldn't have to pay, they could take it on to the renters. Okay? It's not that much. I mean, I don't understand why. I mean, I know our recycling bill went up $30 this year because there's not, probably because there's not enough people recycling on the island. And I think my personal opinion is that I think it's really poor that we don't have more participation in it. That's all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I don't want to miss somebody else. Anybody?
No, no, no.
She just wanted. You could put that painting for $4,000.
Okay. Help me out here. We had a motion being made.
I did.
Is there a second? And if you'll read that, that a word.
Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6 to discuss the personnel matter.
Don't know how long it's going to be, but we'll be back.